Good evening. I'd like to call the regular town council meeting of Monday, May 19th, to order. And if you are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Counselor Buganski. Counselor Lewis. Counselor Balboni. Counselor Carey. Mayor Del Nicky. Here. Deputy Mayor Syracusea.
Present.
Counselor King. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Here.
Counselor Pendleton.
Present.
Thank you. Prior to the presentations by our Director of Public Works, I have a few comments. On Saturday, May 17th, the South Windsor Chamber of Commerce held a ribbon cutting at Club Studio located on Buckland Road, where I had the opportunity to tour the facility and present them a proclamation on behalf of the Town Council and the residents of South Windsor. And Counselor Fitzgerald was also in attendance and who is also a member. And we had a great turnout for the Armed Forces Day celebration on Saturday, May 17th. The weather held out for the fireworks lasting approximately 15 minutes, with the rain just starting during the finale. And thank you to the Patriotic Commission. On Monday, May 26th, South Windsor hosts its Memorial Day Parade. The parade will commence at 10:00 a.m. along Nutmaid Road, south proceeding to Pleasant Valley Road, culminating at Veterans Memorial Park. And following the parade, there will be a Memorial Day ceremony at 11:00 a.m. And I have one last item prior to Mr. Stetson is, I'd like to read an email that I received from Mr. Somil Patel, representing BAPs Charities about an event they are holding on June 1st. And you all should have the flyer in your packets. And the email reads, "My name is Somil Patel, and I represent BAPs Charities, a global organization dedicated to health awareness, educational services, humanitarian relief, and environmental protection, and community empowerment. We have over 100 branches in North America, including one in Newington, Connecticut. Our efforts are driven by volunteers who dedicate their time to selfless service, both in the local neighborhoods and across the globe. At our Newington location, we have hosted annual Thanksgiving food drives, flu shot clinics, blood donation events, and health awareness lectures. Of course, we also organize our annual In the Joy of Others Walk Run benefiting organizations such as the Nature Conservancy, Susan G. Komen, and local fire and police departments. On June 1st, starting at 2:00 p.m., BAPs Charities, Newington, will host its annual Spirit of Service Walk Run at Elm Ridge Park and Rocky Hill in support of Newington Police Department, Newington Fire Department, and Rocky Hill Fire Department. Last year, over 350 community members participated, and this year, we hope to engage even more of our community in this meaningful event. We would like to humbly extend an invitation to the South Windsor Town Council and residents of South Windsor to join us on June 1st at 2:00 p.m. at Elm Ridge Park, Rocky Hill, to show support to our beneficiaries. We hope to see you there, and thank you." And now I will turn it over to our Director of Public Works, who is here tonight to present the Rich Boudreau Award and the Citizen Civic Group Business Partner Recognition Award.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and fellow counselors. Happy Monday and happy National Public Works Week. Annually, the public works community takes a week to step back, recognize the staff, and give back to the communities that we all serve. This past weekend, on Saturday, at Geisler's, we had our annual Full of Public Works Food Drive, and we gathered about $200 and maybe a bed full of food for the local food bank. And really quickly, I'd like to just reach out to the folks that helped volunteer their time. Mr. Clay Major, Gary Shack, Marco Muchacharo, Neil Roback, Jeff Linay, Tony Manfree, Janet Huitt, Brianna Hannigan, Kevin Vincennes, and John Hanol. All those guys are staff here, and they took time Saturday to go and collect goods for the food bank here in town. I'm honored to be representative of such a critical industry. This year's theme for Public Works Week is people, purpose, and presence. And as you can see, on Saturday, we had our team show up. We shared what our purpose was, had a presence, and were able to give back to the residents. Before we get into the award ceremony here, I'm a little remiss. Mr. Jeff Doolittle, he's retiring very shortly. He was not able to join us tonight and present the awards. He has some family matters that he's taking care of out of state. But we are having a retirement party for him on Friday, May 30th, at 1:00 p.m. at Alyssa Brewing. Please come join us and help celebrate his excellent tenure here with the town. So let's get back to what Public Works is all about. You know, it's a critical industry where, you know, most of the work that we do is kind of hidden from plain sight. And I don't want to say most of the work is taken for granted, but it's certainly guaranteed. It's guaranteed that when you flush the toilet, things are going to work, the roads are going to be paved, and the drainage is going to work. If things go wrong, rest assured, we will be there to take care of it. One of the facets of this week is to give back and recognize our partners in the community. Today, I would like to start with our Citizen Award. And the requirements for this is to help raise staff awareness and service delivery either through positive constructive feedback of programs, projects, make suggestions on how to improve programs or projects, provide moral support and encouragement to public work staff, and perform community service in programs or projects. This year, we would like to recognize Mr. Joe Kennedy. I'm sure all of you are familiar with him. He has been with the town and anchor for many commissions for many, many years. Just briefly, 25 years of work on commissions, park and recreation, drug and alcohol abuse prevention, zoning board appeals, open space task force, water pollution control, agriculture arts and nature subcommittee, planning and zoning subcommittee, 20 years on the Agriculture Commission, and 20 years on the Economic Development Commission. He was also a driver for 14 years for Meals on Wheels in South Windsor, and a driver for 12 years for Fish Friends in service here, which was a service where we would take residents to medical appointments. That had to be dissolved around COVID. Past president of the South Windsor J.C.s and past president of the Super 60 Sports Club of South Windsor. If we all could, can we please give Mr. Joe Kennedy a hand and recognize him?
Thank you, Vincent, and the town and everyone for this award. But I'd like to thank all the people that volunteered for all the council, the boards, the commissions, all the hardworking town employees, all people that volunteer for civic groups, nonprofits, and youth sports. I thank you. I'm glad that we saw on the food drive, there's a lot of food insecurity now because people are having hard times making ends meet, and the town steps up. But I thank you again, Vincent.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
So next, we would like to recognize our business partner for 2025. And the requirements for this are to meet or exceed the delivery of service under the terms of their contract, help forge a positive and creative work environment, help improve the quality of life and/or the service delivery for residents of South Windsor, and demonstrate professionalism, enthusiasm, and improve the image of South Windsor through the delivery of their services. This year, we're going to recognize design professionals, AKA Mr. Peter DiMoli. I learned something new today about Mr. DiMoli. He is a staff alum. He is the previous director of Planning and Zoning, AKA 1979. I was two years old. And Peter and his team have touched upon thousands of projects here in town. DPI has donated in the whole and our part designs for a multitude of projects here in South Windsor. Most recently, we've got the Splash Pad, the Boundless Playground, the VNP Memorial Wall, Rotary Club Projects, and the Welcome Wall that we're going to be installing very soon at the corner of Route 5 and Sullivan Ave. I can't say enough about this man. He should probably be on the payroll as an economic developer with the amount of work that he kind of steer into town here. He helped out with all these wall phase, and, you know, they work on about 5,000 projects a year, and a very good percentage of those are in town here. So if we can, let's put our hands together for Mr. Peter DiMoli.
Two minutes. Thank you. No, it's been an honor and privilege to serve this town and be part of this town since December of '79. Yeah, I preceded Michelle by a little bit as first director planning for the town. And, you know, been involved in many different groups, many land development projects, but being able to raise a family here, and it's been terrific place to live, to work, to recreate, to worship. And now, because it's new, we can actually shop here for everything by a shirt and town and all that stuff. So it's a wonderful place to live, it's one of the best places on the planet, and it's been an honor and privilege to help out. And I'm honored. I'm really honored. Thank you very much, Vincent.
So I can't speak much to Rich Boudreau as a person. He passed long before my time here in the town. But I know that Mr. Gantic, the previous director, he genuinely felt that Rich Boudreau embodied everything that it meant to be a public works professional. And, you know, that would be to be enthusiastic, to be dedicated, to show creativity and innovation in the approach to their work, to be cosh conscious, be willing to help others out, have a smile on their face, and have fun while working hard. We have Rich's successor here, Mr. Clay Major, who we're going to recognize as the Rich Boudreau Award winner this year. And, you know, talking about the guarantees, you know, just last week, we couldn't stand in this room. Mr. Major was handling a roof project, a remodel on the third floor, new furniture coming in. We had a bunch of issues at the police station with a car crashing into the gate, and probably about 20 other things that I'm not even aware of. And he managed to also get this room back up and whole with all of us sitting in here in a little less than three weeks, which does not happen by accident, and it's a guarantee that Public Works and the staff of South Windsor are always going to be here for the residents and try to do our best, be cosh conscious. I can't tell you how many times Clay has looked at things and saved us hundreds of thousands of dollars. Not only is he a cornerstone of the town, but he's also a wonderful friend. He's an insightful mentor and the consummate professional. He was also the 2022 National Professional Manager of the Year through APWA. And, you know, that says something. Please allow me to congratulate and thank on behalf of the town of South Windsor, the staff, and the residents, and congratulate Mr. Clay Major.
Thank you, everyone. What a great honor. And, you know, we're going to Rome in about a month or so, and, you know, one of the sayings in Rome is, "It wasn't built in a day, and it wasn't built by one person." And although I stand up here and take recognition for this award, really, it goes to say how much cooperation we all get from Public Works, from streets, from the police department, because I couldn't do my job without them. Everything I do, they touch, and they have a part in what I do. So thank you to all of them for this award, too.
Thank you so much for your time, guys.
Thank you, and congratulations to all the award winners. Moving on to Item 5, Counselor Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have motion, second, changes, additions. Counselor Buganski.
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to move Item 13E to after Item 7, public input.
We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to Item 6, communications and reports from the town manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I move over to the chief, who's going to give us a quick update about vehicle break-ins, I wanted to go through a couple of things on my written report for all of you. First, on May 14th, I attended the First Responders Breakfast hosted by the Chamber of Commerce at Dunkin' Donuts. I wanted to take a moment to thank all of our first responders who worked tirelessly 24/7 in order to keep our South Windsor residents safe. I also wanted to make the council aware that the fire department, along with the town, is in the process of putting out a bid for a replacement fire truck consistent with the fire department's replacement strategy. We expect the construction time for the new truck to be up to four years, so we need to begin this process now to ensure a timely and appropriate replacement. Additionally, it's great Mr. Majors was here. He was integral in making this happen. The renovations on our second floor are getting closer to being completed. The counter and waiting area have been upgraded to enhance safety and ease of use for both staff and residents. We are still waiting on furniture and fixtures for the office area, which will allow the staff to have a more adequate space for plan reviews, meetings, and much-needed map slash plan storage. This project was funded with ARPA funds. Lastly, over the last few weeks, the annex parking lot was reclaimed and paved. The parking lot had met its useful life and needed to be replaced. The public work staff did an excellent job managing the project, including working with staff to move their vehicles and working around weather. Lastly, one other item not on my written report for all of you. As the mayor noted earlier, we celebrated Armed Forces Day over the weekend. I wanted to say a thanks to the staff and volunteers, especially the Patriotic Commission, who participated in making that an excellent event. And I also wanted to recognize all those in the armed forces on that special day. And with that being said, I'm going to turn over the microphone to the chief, so he could talk to all of you about vehicle break-ins real quick.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. As the manager said, I'm here tonight to provide a quick update regarding motor vehicle burglaries, and a lot of times we'll lump those in with motor vehicle thefts. In preparation for tonight, I, you know, it's funny, when the request was made, I thought, eerily, I haven't heard a lot about it, knock on wood. And if talking about it tonight summons the beast, then it's your fault, not mine. But they're way, way down. I'm happy to report that 2025 year-to-date, we've had eight incidents, three vehicle burglaries and five vehicle thefts. Vehicle could be anything from a tractor trailer down to a utility trailer at a private property or commercial property for that matter. In comparison, when I saw those, when I pulled our numbers this year, year-to-date, I did the same thing. I wanted to do a five-year look back just to see where the trend was. And for comparison, back in 2021, we had 69. We had 50 burglaries and 19 stolen vehicles. In 2022, in the same time period, January 1st to May 19th, we had 27, which was 20 burglaries, seven stolen vehicles. 2023, we had 51, 43 burglaries and eight stolen vehicles. Last year, 2024, we had 26, 20 burglaries and six stolen vehicles. And then this year, again, January 1st to today, we've seen a major, huge drop off, down to eight total, three burglaries and five stolen vehicles. So just because the numbers are low doesn't mean that we're going to relax. Our folks are out there 24/7. They have been very, very, very busy lately, especially in the hours of darkness. A lot of things happening that don't necessarily make the headlines, or the stuff that does make the headlines is not the entire story. But they've been very busy. So what we plan to do is as school comes to an end, college kids are coming home, people are out and about more, the weather's a little more desirable for not only the good guys, but the bad guys, too. We'll start our social media awareness of locking your cars, removing your valuables from your cars, things like that. So that's really, there's not much to it. It's a quick update. I'm happy to report that the numbers are down. I think that's for a variety of different reasons. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have also.
Counselor Pendleton?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for coming out and addressing that this evening. And seeing that it's May and school's going to be out in June, a month away, just trying to prime the people for locking their cars, what was your catchphrase that you used when you initially started talking about this? Like, do you know where your keys are tonight? Did you lock your car at 9:00 o'clock or something?
Yeah.
What was your little catchphrase you had?
I'd have to go back.
Please do, because that was really good.
We had our 9:00 p.m. routine.
That's it, the 9:00 p.m.?
It was lock your cars, leave a light on, take your valuables inside out of your car.
There was something, your little catchphrase.
Yeah, we're going to dive back into that.
Please do, so it can be shared on social media, just to get folks geared up for the June with schools getting out. But I appreciate you coming and talking about that, because that, like, catchphrase has been in my head, and I don't know what it is, but I'd love to see that soon.
No problem. That's our plan.
Okay, any other questions for the chief? Okay, I think we're all set.
Okay, thank you.
And any questions for the town manager while we're still in? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Moving on to Item 7, public input. For items on the agenda, public input shall not exceed 30 minutes. When recognized by the mayor, the speaker shall approach the lectern, give their name and address. Speaker shall avoid personal attacks or impugning or alleging an improper motive to any person. The speaker may address the council on any item on the agenda. The speaker shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to come forward at this time for items on the agenda? Going once? Going twice? All right, seeing none, moving on to Item 13E, Counselor Carey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution accepting the resignation of Steve Cordero from the Water Pollution Control Authority effective May 8th, 2025. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby accepts with regret the resignation of Steve Cordero from the Water Pollution Control Authority effective May 8th, 2025, and be it further resolved, the South Windsor Town Council extends its thanks to Stephen Cordero for the time dedicated to serving the community by membership on the Water Pollution Control Authority.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Counselor Pendleton?
I'm just curious as to why this was moved up in the agenda when I don't see an appointment anywhere else for Mr. Cordero? There was no other business happening concerning him, so why was this moved up?
Has to resign before someone can be appointed.
Someone's replacing him, then?
Yes.
Gotcha, thank you.
You're welcome. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Okay, moving on to Item 8, Counselor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we approve the April 21st, 2025 Town Council regular meeting minutes, and be resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the regular Town Council meeting dated October 21st, 2025. What did I say? Oh goodness, April. Yeah, well, been that type of day. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the regular Town Council meeting of April 21st, 2025. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion, changes, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. 13B or 8B?
Yes, I move that we approve the May 5th, 2025 Town Council regular meeting minutes, and be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby approves the minutes of the regular Town Council meeting of May 5th, 2025.
We have a motion, we have a second, any changes, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions? You're all set, Deputy Mayor?
Yep.
All those in favor, say, yeah, we have, I just lost it when I, you didn't abstain, so all those, we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor, aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, moving on to Item 9, communications liaisons, officers, and boards directly responsible to the council. Counselor King.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Making sure that everyone knows in regards to the Social Justice and Racial Equity Commission that they regret to inform that the event initially planned- that they regret to inform that the event initially planned for the twenty-first, the twenty-fourth of May, twenty twenty-five is canceled for now. They collectively decided to postpone the events to a later date, so they're in the process of planning, and as soon as they know, we'll know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other, Counselor Balboni?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. P B C met, and they're continuing to close out Pleasant Valley. Things are really slowing down on that project. They also reviewed and discussed the plan for the Parks and Recs facility, and they'll be ready to present it to the council at the June sixteenth meeting. I'd like to ask that they're first on the agenda, as they'll be having reps from both Colliers and the architect firm here, please.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports? Seeing none, moving on to item ten, reports from committees. Seeing none, moving on to item eleven, Counselor Bogansky.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Motion to approve eleven A one through eleven A two as a first reading on the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Eleven B, having none, eleven C, having none, item twelve, Counselor Balboni.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution appointing a rate maker for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Be resolved, the South Windsor Town Council hereby appoints Michael Maniscalco, Town Manager, as the rate maker for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Moving on to thirteen A, discussion item FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Funding. Mr. Stetson.
Good evening again, Madam Mayor and fellow counselors. So last week you folks were sent a memo regarding the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. It's relative to the storm in twenty twenty-one, Hurricane Henri. The town experienced well over a foot of rain that summer, and we had some damage to drainage on Chandler Drive and Celia Drive. The Town Council, I believe, two Town Councils ago probably approved moving forward this hazard mitigation grant. Currently, I'm standing in front of you to discuss the current environment relative to the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the guarantee that they will be paying their grants. There is a likelihood that we will continue on with the project and not be reimbursed. So in short, I was hoping to get some clarification from the Town Council about how we should move forward. The work has been temporarily repaired since the incident back in twenty twenty-one. So the infrastructure is functioning as designed. But if we do encounter rains again of that magnitude, there, there is a likelihood that the system will fail again.
Counselor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate you, Mr. Stetson, for being here. So I see on the, the back of our conversation, your analysis as well as the options for South Windsor. And just so that we're clear, although the, the public will have access to these documents and these exhibits as well. For you and your team, especially in light of the awards that were just presented tonight, obviously, we trust your leadership. What are, what are you thinking? What have you and the town manager discussed in regards to? Because these projects, if I understand correctly, some of them have already been started.
So the design work has been substantially complete. We have a contractor that's ready and engaged to do the work. We have the twenty percent match encumbered. So all we need to do is start the work. I've asked assurances from our handlers at Demus and FEMA that we will be reimbursed. And they said that they cannot provide any assurances or any information other than what is provided in the memo. This is about a five hundred thousand dollar exposure, in my opinion, that we might not get reimbursed for. We've worked with the Finance Director, and there, there is opportunity, I think, within our funds to have these projects be completed. Obviously, they're not line items in a budget, and we'd have to find this money elsewhere and maybe not do other projects. But that is why the town manager and I have elected to have this discussion, because we're not sure how you guys would like to move forward.
Madam Mayor, if I could, what is the liability to not start these projects or to not do them? And I only, as I'm thinking about it, it's, it's not like a, say, for example, a sewage system to your house that if you don't fix it, then all of a sudden the toilets don't flush.
Right.
Is that what we're kind of looking at here, if we don't do these projects, and then it becomes even more of a cost as opposed to getting the septic cleaned out?
So we would have to make the repairs again. We have good money invested into this Hazard Mitigation Grant already with the design work. So that, that exposure to lose that good money is there, the design isn't going to go away, we will always have it. As far as the liability piece, you know, the exposure at Celia Drive is, is that if we, we have another intense summer of rain that the road could wash away and those houses would become an island. The issue on Chandler Drive is the whole neighborhood drains right next to a very nice house there, about twenty-five feet away. And there is a potential that, you know, if we got forty days and forty nights of rain, that it would impact their home.
Counselor Pendleton?
I saw Mr. Maniscalco wanted to put his light on. Do you have anything to add to this conversation right now? I want to give you the floor. Okay, you got it? Okay. Forgive me, find the money from where? It's not budgeted.
So there is twenty eighteen bond projects that, that, we would have to take a bunch of little pots of money to get there. We're working with the state. We have some old projects from, you know, the twenty teens that still aren't closed out for a multitude of reasons. We really don't need to get into it here. But having all of that money given back to the town from the state that they're holding on to for bond reasons or whatsoever. You know, we could find money in, in that aspect. It's something that Mr. Doolittle and I have been working on before he retires, and it, it's ongoing, trying to close these projects out with the state.
And, and the work that you want to do is for drainage? Is that what this is? This is for drainage?
This is all stormwater drainage.
Stormwater drainage, okay, because that wasn't real spelled out. I didn't catch that in here. You just said that there's some projects from twenty ten that haven't been closed out?
So with the state, when they're grant projects, they need every canceled check. They need to double-check, dot their Ts, cross their Is. People retire, they, they have a vacuum of talent there at Connecticut DOT. So there's been a lot of turnover, and it's very difficult to close these state projects out with the state.
Have we done everything on our part to get these closed out?
Absolutely, every day.
Okay, it's, the state is the holdup on the closeout of the projects?
It's very, it's very, very complicated, but for the most part, it's held up in bureaucracy at the state.
Okay, but our, our piece?
Mm-hmm.
Town piece?
We're currently, every day, working on trying to close these projects out and getting information to the state that they're either seeking or asking for again, or asking for in a different version.
Okay, okay.
Just today, we confirmed that a copy file of a check will be sufficient. They don't need a copy of the actual canceled check. That is the level of aggregate that they need.
Does it change every day, from one way to another way, to a different way, go back to another, okay? So I think my question is, well, I think what, forgive me, it's just like, this is coming to us, we have the memo here, not too much information on it, it's kind of getting thrown at us a little bit. When do we have to have, give you an answer for this? Is there a deadline?
Not, not-
This was just brought forward to us, so I don't know exactly.
So we're currently in the grant award period. The projects need to be completed by this time next year. You know, the project will probably only take thirty to forty-five days to complete. So there, there is a, a calendar clock, so to speak, for the project that needs to be completed in. Hopefully, we get some more news, either in the affirmative that they will be honoring their guarantees or in the negative that they're going to be closing the program. You know, I don't know if you guys have been following the news, but they just got rid of building resilient infrastructure grants, BRIC. That's one of the grant programs that FEMA was known to give to towns. It's just gone.
I think, Mr. Maniscalco, where I stand on this is, as an in case, if we don't get the money from the grant, what is the town going to do to find the money and from where? And if you could explain to us before I can make a decision on this, I just don't want to say, okay, sure, let's do this. And then you come up and you say, oh, we had a poll from twenty-five different places, and these other projects don't have, aren't going to get done, and those aren't going to get done, and those aren't going to get done. But if you could spell all that out and have a more complete explanation of all this, this is me, before I can make a decision. I'm sorry, fellow counselors. And Vincent, I'm sorry, but I just need a little bit more detailed information before a decision is made. And, and I think this concerns me a little bit, for the fact that, you know, with our budget and, and the decrease in the Board of Ed and our budget being so slim and almost down to a zero. What bothers me and what I think about is something catastrophic in our town, like we had before, when we had that sinkhole on Main Street. And it took lots of money to fix that and a long time to fix that. The town was fabulous with fixing that, but unexpected, you know, here, but we didn't have to pay for that. What I'm saying is, unexpected catastrophic something in town that we're, we don't even know. We don't have the money in our budget for it. So what, it, it concerns me, like, we don't have a big rainy day fund as a just-in-case. So to do something like this, I understand the people and their properties, and it needs, something needs to be done. I'd just like to know how it's going to get paid for, you know, forgive me for asking. Mr. Maniscalco, maybe you can get back to us with that?
Sure, I could get you a more exact answer at another meeting. I would say that's kind of the, the big picture question. We could put together a hypothetical, but to be very honest, in the event that we move forward with the project, things happen, it's only going to be a hypothetical, because things will change between now and when that project's actually done, so.
Right, and we don't know if, if they're going to, if we'll get the money or not get the money, you know, from the federal government, from FEMA. But it's, it's, it's the same thing that I'm going back, if you're looking for five hundred thousand dollars, if we had a catastrophic event in town that costs us five hundred thousand dollars, where are we going to get the money?
Well, so there's two different things. If it was a catastrophic event, so let's just say it was an emergency. It was something that had to be fixed. That's the purpose for our general fund, and we would pull from that to make those repairs. This is a bit different, because it's not exactly an emergency, it's a planned project. Yes, does it have importance, and there's an emergency nature to it, because it's associated with, you know, FEMA and the storm and everything else. But it's not, it's not, there's no exigent circumstance associated with it. So those are kind of two separate scenarios.
Now, did either of you know that this might not be reimbursed to us by FEMA prior to the budget being approved? I mean, why wasn't this presented to us prior to the budget to be approved, so then maybe the money could have been put in the budget as a just-in-case?
We've been working on trying to get information from FEMA on whether they were going to say, yes, we'll fund it, or no, we're not for quite a while. We've, over and over and over again, been asking in ten different ways to get an answer that we're not getting.
Okay, and I'm, I'm sorry, I can't give you an answer this evening. I just need more information.
Understood, Counselor Pendleton.
I apologize.
Thank you.
Counselor Carey?
One of the things that would be helpful is if you could share, not right now, but just share the details of, of what these two projects are, you know. So just to understand them.
Absolutely.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
Thank you. Do you know if, if these grants are part of any of the legal actions that Attorney General Tong has taken against the administration? I know that they just issued a preliminary injunction last week in a, you know, basically stopping the administration from stopping giving out money for several grants. I don't think that this one was in that batch, but I don't know if-
I'm not aware if he's engaged with that.
Okay. I assume he probably is, but that might be something to look into, to see if this is being litigated. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Do you know approximately how much the, the previous repair cost and when we did that?
Yes, I do. The previous repair cost about twenty-four thousand dollars, and it was done in September of twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so I, I am in agreement that probably should wait and get some more information, but it is encouraging to know that in case something were to happen, and we do need to make a repair prior to knowing the decision that, you know, twenty-four thousand dollars is a lot better and easier to swallow than five hundred thousand, regardless of how much it's gone up. I imagine it's not going to approach anywhere near five hundred thousand. So, you know, my recommendation would be to wait it out, see how things settle. Seems like a lot is changing in the country, good things, too, have, have been happening, both here and around the world. So let's hope that this, we get that same good news here. So my recommendation would be to, you know, pump the brakes a little bit and hope that the, the need for a repair doesn't come, but it's good to know that we already know how to do it. You guys did a great job, and, you know, hopefully, we get that money and we can proceed.
Counselor Bogansky?
Thank you, Member. How much, how much time and money has already been invested up to this point on these two projects, would you say?
Me personally or in totality? So we started this grant process in twenty twenty-two. It's twenty twenty-five. Lots, lots of time has been invested in this, as far as town money.
That, that's forgetting the grants, though, right?
Right.
But has there been, like, specific site work, engineering work, design work?
Yeah, so we've spent-
That has costs associated with them, that's what I want to understand.
We've spent about seventy thousand dollars through a consultant, Weston Sampson, on having the design submitted, going through the application process. Easily hundred and twenty staff hours invested in shepherding this.
So at this point, we've essentially done the design and engineering work, we're just waiting to put shovels in the ground, essentially?
So the, in December, we were awarded the grant. We were notified from FEMA, congratulations, please proceed. And then in January, we had some new data points, that is in your memo, which proceeded to create this discussion.
All right, I just, I just want to get a, a sense for how far down the road we've actually already been engaged in, in the project itself.
We've got a contractor on contract, ready to do the work. He's probably invested about six hours just looking at this.
Sure, okay, all right, thank you.
I'll keep it short.
Yeah, Counselor Pendleton?
I'll keep it real short. Could we just get the background history on this project? And because these guys weren't elected, these folks, my, my counselors here weren't elected at that time that you started this whole project and what was presented to the council to begin with? Or what the initial problem is? I don't even sure they knew. Just a little bit of background history on the project and what is, where we're at, why the need, what is happening, just to refresh all of us from twenty twenty-one?
Yeah, absolutely, Counselor Pendleton.
Thank you.
So August of twenty twenty-one, Hurricane Henri came through- So, August of 2021, Hurricane Henry came through. Prior to that, we had several reeks of heavy, heavy rainfall. During this storm, Veterans Memorial Pool overtopped, flooding the pool, creating erosion. Sealy Drive was overcome with water. We had to install a bunch of sandbags to divert the water away from a home. We started seeing some erosion on the road surface there. And then Chandler Drive, there was a mini Grand Canyon. It was about fifty feet long, fifteen feet deep. There was just so much water going through the system that it broke the pipes apart and then eroded all the soil, filled in the wetlands with about three thousand square feet of soil. Once the storm was over, we went and cleaned up everything that we could. We employed ESI to make the temporary repairs on Chandler Drive because the work was a little bit too deep for the equipment that we have here in town. Then, in probably about January of 2022, I approached the Town Council for this Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. We applied for all three of those sites that I mentioned, Veterans Memorial Pool, Sealy Drive, and Chandler Drive. We engaged with Weston Sampson as the consultant, who put together the design plan. Several site visits occurred to go over what the best approach would be. And we put a nice package in for the grant. It took, you know, probably about eighteen months for them to review it. There was a lot of turnover, certainly plenty of reasons why it took so long. But just now, we've been told that we were awarded in December. And then a bunch of executive orders came out relative to federal grants. You have a deputy director of FEMA on record saying to hold back on all grant awards all years, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five. And then you have the deputy commissioner of Department of Emergency Management, Health and Safety, advising all of her constituents in the state to proceed cautiously, that the funding may or may not be there. I've had several conversations off the record with FEMA and state staff, and they all know just as much as we do in this room about what's going to occur next. And I would be remiss if I didn't bring this issue forward to you guys. I would love to get the project done for the residents. It's good engineering. It will provide these locations a little bit more resiliency to heavy water events. But at the end of the day, we might not see that again for another fifty years, and it might not happen. I think I captured everything.
Thank you. No, that was a good, that was a good snapshot of everything going on. And you followed this grant from the beginning to find out where, and with the changes of, in the government, and you followed through with this, you did? Not some, one of your staff members, but you did?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. I just want to, I want to thank the person who followed through with that.
Yeah, just doing my job, thank you.
And Sealy Drive is located where?
Sealy Drive is right off of Denning.
Got it.
It's, I believe, your first right coming up the hill off Buckland.
Got it, yes, I know that, they need this repair desperately, thank you.
But right now, Sealy, everything's stable right now. So, if we don't have any rains like we did, there's fine. But it does need to be done. So, is this something, we don't want to make a decision tonight, I'm assuming, correct? Is this something, another one meeting or two meetings, would it affect going forward?
So, I mean, I think we can try to put together some hypotheticals in terms of where funding would come from in the event that FEMA doesn't come through. And we can certainly get that to you. That being said, is there, like I said earlier, there's not an exigent circumstance that we have to do this today. There is the potential we could get a rainstorm tomorrow that, you know, could dump a whole bunch of rain on us, and we could have problems. But I think to, you know, in the immediate, right now, I don't think we need to make a decision today. So, we can certainly have this as an item on one of your future agendas and talk a little bit further about it. Really, at the end of the day, we're just kind of looking to get the temperature of the room for all of you and get some better direction as to which way to go. Because it is such a sizable dollar amount, you know, I think it could be kind of challenging for us if we move forward and the grant doesn't actually come through.
Yeah, because I agree, I know it has to be done, but you have to kind of find out where the money is going to come from. But the hypotheticals will help. Counselor Carey?
So, going back to my other question, though, can we please have the documentation around, you know, what we filed in the grant so we can read, like, what exactly we're doing in these two sites?
Would you like the whole grant application?
Probably this high.
Oh, oh. Okay, I just want, I just want, what I'm trying to understand, and I, thank you for asking for, you know, some explanation, is, we did something that was twenty-four thousand, that's currently holding, but this is five hundred thousand. I'm just trying to see what the difference is and, you know, what it is that we're planning to do. Are we building a culvert? Are we building a detention basin? I, you know, whatever that is, I'd like to get a sense of it.
In layman's terms, the approach on Sealy Drive would be to put a secondary discharge pipe above the existing one. So, if the water level ever got to that level, it would go through the second pipe. The issue on Chandler Drive is, it's a very steep pitch of elevation. So, the pipe goes like this. When you get a lot of water going through it at once, it creates a lot of velocity, and it shook the pipe apart and created the gorge. The repair plan for that is to lower the angle and put some manholes. I believe there's three of them. It's about a four-hundred-foot run, so that it drops, slows down the velocity, goes and drops again, and slows down the velocity. I'm not saying that it was not designed correctly when it was put in, but I don't know if folks were anticipating that kind of rain in that shorter period of time. And then, yeah, we'll just leave it right there.
Thank you, very helpful.
Counselor Pendleton?
Just to have, like, a whole project packet, maybe, with information and what's being done, and what's going to be done, where the money is going to go? Just a project packet and present it to us like that, that would, that would be helpful for us, I believe. Thank you.
Counselor Fitzgerald?
I apologize if you already answered this question, but how close are you to being ready to go with the project to get shovels in the ground?
The project's been bid, we have a contractor on contract, ready to go. So, it's a matter of a phone call.
If we didn't have all these data points out there saying, "Be cautious," the project would be done right now.
How long will it take to complete the project once they start?
About six to eight weeks.
Okay, I think it's kind of important to find out where this grant stands. And, you know, if there's something legal that's kind of got things paused right now. Because if we can get the project done, and I assume you do the project, you then tell Demis that you're done with the project, they reimburse us, and then they draw down from the feds. So, if they can do, you know, if, if, if the grant that this is being given to us under is under some sort of a stay, or the non-payments are being stayed, and we can get the project done and get that money drawn down before, you know, if a court says, "Yes, you know, administration, you can go forward with, you know, cutting off this money." You know, hopefully, by then, there's a possibility that we could have it done and have the money reimbursed before a decision is made. So, it'd be good to know where, where it stands legally. Thank you.
Thank you. Light, your light, please. You can't, you gotta have your light on.
Sorry, sorry, I didn't mean to jump in. But you'll let us know between now and the next meeting if anything changes. If you get the grant, we don't have to go forward on our end of the town to do this. Let us know, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, moving on to thirteen B, discussion item, open space referendum. Pat Botteran, Chairperson of the Open Space Task Force, and Michelle Leip, Director of Planning to Present.
Up, there you go. Good evening, Mayor Del Nicky, Deputy Mayor of Syracuse, Town Council members, Town Manager and Town Attorney, and all the residents. I'm Pat Botteran, I reside at thirty-four Victor Lane, and tonight, I'm with the Open Space Task Force. At the May fifth, twenty-twenty-five Open Space Task Force meeting, there was a discussion about asking the Town Council to put forth a two-million-dollar referendum question on the November twenty-twenty-five election ballot. The referendum monies are used for outright purchase of properties, easements, agricultural development rights. There has been a few years, for example, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, that no properties were acquired, therefore, no money was spent from this open space account. Because the town is in the process of acquiring the one-fifty-five Griffin Road parcel this year, the final amount is yet to be determined, but could put open space referendum monies at risk if other properties came up in the next few years. If the council decides to put the two-million-dollar referendum question on the ballot, this would give the town greater purchasing power to quickly acquire future properties. In the past, the town has been prudent with the open space money and has secured grants to help offset the purchase price. By going for referendum in November, we could potentially avoid the town from having to go forth with the special voting, which would cost the town money. Some benefits of open space land, which are many, provide habitat for wildlife, parks, passive recreation, steam reinvista, and agriculture. It was also noted that on the town surveys, the citizen put open space at the top for desirability for the town. We hope that the Town Council will consider putting forth two million dollars for the acquisition of town open space on the November twenty-twenty-five ballot. And if I can, take a moment to read a letter that I received from John Colwell, who could not be here today. John is a residential representative since his retirement from Parks and Recs Department. Hello, all. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend tonight's meeting, as I will be out of town. As a former superintendent of Parks and forty-plus-year resident of South Windsor, I feel that it is critical for the town and the town residents to do everything in its power to secure further funds for now dwindling and valuable open space properties. The best way to do this is by having a referendum and securing funds for any further properties that may come up for sale, similar to the recent purchased parcel on Griffin Road, that will become an integral part of Ry Street Park. I hope that you will all agree to vote unanimously and move forward with the two-million-dollar referendum before you. Thank you, John Colwell. Now, this is bonded money, so it's not like two million dollars would be sitting in a savings account. It's just bonded as needed. And as you know, we have Griffin Road, and then tonight, you will be discussing in executive session another property.
Counselor, Counselor Carey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you very much for bringing this up. Can you just share with council the referendums we've had in the past and how they were approved?
Yes, they were approved by the voters, and they all passed unanimously. I don't have it, I believe you have it, but I believe we started out, when we first started looking at properties and advising the Town Council. Thank you. And this is what we had. In nineteen ninety-six, the very first referendum, we went for four million dollars. The second referendum, November of two thousand and five, four million dollars. Now, this is when a lot of properties were coming before us. You know, the big parcels, like the John Mitchell Fairgrounds, Priest Farm, Major Michael Donnelly Preserve, Wapping Park, that's just to name a few. November, two thousand and nine, we went for two million dollars. And that, of course, we did yet acquire some properties. And then we went again, the last one was in two thousand and eighteen, for two million dollars. And out of that, we still have, out of all these referendum monies, three million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-two left. However, we do have the Griffin Road that will be closing. And that will, now, the final course is yet to be determined. Right now, the council has approved for that property so far, one million, four hundred and seventeen thousand. So, that would leave us, and I mean us, in the open space referendum, two million, forty thousand dollars. And now, like I said, you do have another property that has come before you that will be discussed in executive session. So, this is, we, to be honest, we generally do not know when these properties are going to come available.
Counselor Pendleton?
Thank you. How much are you asking for, for this referendum?
Two million dollars.
Are you sure that's all you need or what?
That's what we voted on at our...
That's two million? Okay.
Two million.
No, I'm just saying, just looking at...
I know, it's...
I know. And the reason, I'm going to tell you honestly, the reason I say that. My son, who's thirty-four years old, we moved to town, back to South Windsor when he was three. And he says to me, "Mom," he says this today, "Did you hear about all that development that's going up on one of the farms? All the houses?" And I said, "What are you talking about?" I don't know what he's talking about. So, anyhow, anywho, the bottom line was, he got down to, "There's so many people, there's so many houses, where's all our good farmland going?" He said this today. "And where is all our countryside, and where is all our farming, and where is all our open space, and where is..." We had this conversation today. So, to me, near and dear, to purchase open space or open land or preserve farmland or preserve, or have development rights, or have, as you say, you know, connect it, I'm all for it, I'm all for it. And I always support that, I support farming, I support, you know, keeping. Because I grew up here, so it was all farmland. So, I absolutely support the referendum. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pendleton. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, thank you for coming out tonight. I'm in agreement, support it a hundred percent. Spent my years, my entire life here in town as a little boy, walking on the farmlands on Main Street, and any chance we get to preserve land in town. And it's right in line with what you said is the number-one priority for the residents in town. That's who we represent. So, I'd say, "Let's send it to them, see what they say." And seems like you got a hundred percent win rate here, so hopefully, the town will, will give you some more ammunition to go after some really great land in town and preserve it for my children to enjoy.
Thank you, thank you, Deputy Mayor of Syracuse. Any further questions? I don't think, does Michelle Leip have anything to add, or are we all, is Pat covered it all?
Thank you. No, Pat did a great job. I just want to say that the Open Space Task Force, you know, I went to their meeting, I don't go all the time now because Justin Russo goes. And I walked in the room, and there was twelve members there. I think they have the best attendance of all of our boards and commissions, and they always come out, and they're very enthusiastic. So, as you may recall, they updated the Open Space Master Plan just last year, or twenty-twenty-three, I guess, we're two years now. And our Plan of Conservation Development certainly supports the whole idea of open space purchasing and development right purchases and things like that. So, I think it's a really critical time right now to look at things like development rights as our main street, you'll be talking about tonight. Development pressure's still out there, we know it is. And to speak to the farm that's under development, that is a fifty-unit senior residence development that just started construction on Foster Street called Orchard Point. I will say the town did try to buy that property, we could not negotiate a deal. So, we want to be out there, ready to try to negotiate where we can. But, thank you. It was years ago what we did, yes. Thank you.
Counselor Carey?
I just wanted to say, I totally support what Open Space wants to do. I think that, you know, if something comes available, we have to have some money in our pocket to be able to do something.
Okay, well, the question is, we have a consensus of putting this... Okay, well, the question is, we have a consensus of putting this on our September agenda to go to referendum for November? Okay. Well, there you got it.
Thank you, counselors, thank you very much, thank you for your support, all these decades. Thank you very much, and to the residents too.
Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome.
Moving on, 13C, Deputy Mayor?
Resolution accepting the fiscal year 2024-2025 suspense list. Be it resolved that the South Windsor Town Council hereby accepts the fiscal year 2024-2025 suspense list as proposed and submitted to the Town Council by the Collector of Revenue and as shown in the attached Exhibit C.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Moving on to 13D, Counselor Pendleton?
Resolution setting the 2024-2025 tax rate for real estate, personal property, and motor vehicle. Be it resolved at the tax rate of 35.61 mils for real estate and personal property, and 32.46 for motor vehicles, be levied on the grand list of October 1, 2025.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Okay. Moving on to item 14, because we've already done 13E, passage of ordinance, having none. Moving on to item 15, public input for any matter, public input for any matter, other matter over which the council has jurisdiction shall not exceed 30 minutes. When recognized by the mayor, the speaker shall approach the lectern, give their name and address, speaker shall avoid personal attacks, or amputing, or alleging an improper motive to any person. The speaker may address the council on any item over which the council has jurisdiction. The speaker shall limit their speaking time to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to come forward at this time? Mr. Kennedy?
Hi, Joe Kennedy, 81 Alice Drive. I thank you for supporting the referendum, and back in July 12, 2018, there was five residents from town, we had an article that made Hartford current, and those residents were Joe Kennedy from Agriculture Chair, Chair of the Agriculture Commission, Pat Botteran, Chair of Open Space, Mayor Anwar, Councilman Matthew Riley, and former Councilman Roy Norman. I'd just like to give you this, it has some good, interesting ideas, and thank you for your great.
And you can give it to the clerk. Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to come forward at this time for any item not on your agenda? Any matter? Going once? Going twice? Seeing none, moving on to item 16, communications from the council. Counselor Bogansky?
Just point of clarification, I tried to get your attention, I didn't, 13D, I think the tax rate should be for 25, 26? Yes, it's written.
No, it's written wrong. They can make a friendly, somebody that can make a friendly amendment, or do we have to reread it, Attorney Corella?
Tell me.
Probably a good, good idea to redo it.
Just redo it?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Pendleton?
Okay, thank you. Uh, resolution setting the 2025-2026 tax rate for real estate, personal property, and motor vehicle. Be it resolved at the tax rate of 35.61 mils for real estate and personal property, and 32.46 for motor vehicle, be levied on the grand list of October 1, 2025.
And Counselor King, I think, seconded the last one, so we have, okay? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay, communications from the council. Counselor King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council, including those, I just have four things that I wanted to speak on, just really briefly. Number one, for all of our residents, the council, as well as a variety of other commissions and committees, has put in a lot of work. We saw Mr. Setson here this, this evening with the awards and all the hard work that his team does. If you could please, impassionately, walk and use the sidewalks. There's a lot of money that we've put into these sidewalks, there's reasons that these sidewalks were created. Do not walk in the street when there is a sidewalk in front of you. For those, and you know who I'm talking to, on Pleasant Valley, we have two sidewalks on either side. When one ends, cross the street, go to the other. We have sidewalks now in front of the school on Ellington Road. Please use the sidewalks, do not walk in the street. Bicycles, street. Walkers, sidewalks, opposite way. Thank you. Number two, I just want to say congratulations to, and if you guys go to the patch or the bobcat prow, which our students do at the South Windsor High School, there was a South Windsor team who was named the Connecticut Youth of the Year, 16-year-old Amani Lee, by the Boys and Girls Club of Hartford, she's going to be representing the state at the regional competition in New York City in June. This is one of the highest honors that's presented by the Boys and Girls Club, and for an outstanding leadership, 16-years-old, a South Windsor High School product, congratulations, Ms. Lee, she's one of six chosen to compete, and the winner gets a full ride scholarship to wherever she wants to go. Congratulations, Ms. Lee. Number, no, okay, okay, we can do that, we can do that. Congratulations, Ms. Lee. Number two, out of Timothy Edwards, congratulations, Mr. William Chan, 6th grade over at Timothy Edwards, he is the winner in the 20th Annual Energy Smarts Contest for kindergarten through 12th grade, he took second place for his persuasive letter to his dad explaining how being more energy efficient can help his family save money, so shout out to the dad who probably took that letter and said, mind your business, but he took second place out of 500 students in Connecticut competed, and he got second place, so he not only won for TE, but then he got second place out of 500, coming out of another South Windsor school, Timothy Edwards, congratulations, Mr. Chan. Finally, we have several students, and I was going to put them all down, but I was like, you know what, let me just shout you guys all out for the National Merit Scholarships, so many students across the country compete for those, but we had several out of South Windsor High School that were able to get them, and I just wanted to put it out there for all of you, if you don't, please pay attention to the work that our students put in, whether it's through the patch, or specifically the bobcat prow, you can get it on your app, they have an app, it really keeps you in tune with what our students are doing, especially if you don't go to the BOE meetings, but congratulations to all those students, congratulations to all of our seniors who are graduating, because even for those that are going to schools for athletics, we have a whole slew of students that are going to school right now on various scholarships, they were just giving all their awards and, you know, taking off their hats and doing all that type of stuff, so congratulations to you guys as well. Use the sidewalks. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Deputy Mayor of Syracuse?
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to say, unfortunately, this is going to be my last meeting, serving on the council. My life has become extremely different than when I served alongside Counselor Pendleton back when I was appointed, I had my third, third baby girl, became a travel soccer coach somehow, not by my choosing, but beginning to love it, was kind of forced into self-employment and to scratch and claw for, for my family and put food on the table, and that's by the grace of God, become more and more busy by the day, so I was reluctant, reluctant to, to do this, because I do, this does bring me great honor, and I thought it was very important to carry out the oath that I swore, but I'm already on my schedule, going to be missing all of June, all of July, and who knows what's going to happen in the fall after we break for summer, so I was extremely grateful when Counselor Gamble gave me an opportunity to take his place and get some experience before the election, it was not my intention to run again regardless, but I want to say that it's been an honor, serving the town that I've lived in my entire life, I think I was 32 when I jumped in here, and like I said, a lot has changed, so I will say that regardless of our differences, all other eight folks up here truly love the town, I know Counselor Pendleton and I have had our moments in, in the public eye, but just so you all know, her and I get along quite well, and I just want to say that I appreciate each and every one of you, Mr. Maniscalco, you've been very helpful and, and great to work beside Ms. Senerith, you as well, getting to see you become a grandmother and seeing the joy in your eyes, you've been phenomenal so far, Scott Roberts, Attorney Corella, honestly, it's been much easier having all of you folks here to, to help us along the way, I know we ask a lot of questions for good reason, you know, a lot of folks don't realize that we are volunteers, I know we have sworn an oath and we've been elected, but we do put in a lot of hours away from our families, so it does pain me to do this, because I, I really do enjoy helping others, and it's been honestly the biggest ministry, I guess I've been a part of 27,000 people here in town, but it's just, it's not fair to the town, it's time for me to move on, and something I think I'll come back to later on in life when my, my kids are grown, but I just wanted to take a little bit of time to thank all of you, and yeah, it's time for me to kind of put my priorities, you know, faith, faith, family first, but I'll always be here to help the town and, and stay involved, but I will be handing in my letter of resignation, please accept it, if, don't, don't make it a difficult meeting, and I'm excited to see who kind of fills in and, and takes my place, and yeah, life, life goes on, thank you.
Well, thank you, and I wish you good luck on, especially traveling soccer, I mean, you've been going to a lot of those, so good luck to you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 17. Second session, Deputy Mayor?
This is my last hurrah, I guess.
Does Attorney Corella need to come to the, no?
Okay. I move that we go to executive session to discuss item 17A, Main Street and Newberry Road purchase of development rights, and 17B, personnel issue, Town Manager Michael Maniscalco, performance evaluation. I'd like to invite the Town Manager, Mr. Michael Maniscalco, and Assistant Town Manager, Mr. Scott Roberts.
We have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, hearing none, motion carries. And just for, for the audience, we will be adjourning from executive session, and we will not be returning here to close out the meeting, so wish everyone a good night, thank you.